Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Southbridge Town Council meeting on Monday, July 1st, 2019. This is the reorganizational meeting, the 45th seating of the Town Council. I'm going to call the meeting to order and turn it over to Senior Counselor Monique Manor.
Thank you, Ms. Harnoyes. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the swearing-in of councilors-elect by Town Clerk Matty Bonnades. I just, for point of information, I was sworn in this morning because I was starting this meeting tonight. So if I could have the councilors-elect go over and see the Town Clerk, Ms. Bonnades?
Do you, Joseph F. Catrona, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30th, 2022 faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
I just need you to sign right there, please. Of course. I also have to give you the opening line of the conflict of interest, so if you would just sign right here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you, John D. Jovan Jr., solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30th, 2022 faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. If you would just sign right there, please. I also have to give you the opening line of the conflict of interest, so if you would just sign right there.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Counselor Marketti? Do you, Michael J. Marketti, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30th, 2022 faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God. I just need you to sign right there, please. I also hope you have your side here for the opening line of your petition. Thank you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you, and congratulations. Agenda item number five is the invocation, and we have Pastor Michael Reno from the Viewpoint Christian Church.
I apologize.
That's okay. Good evening. I'd like to read from Timothy. It says, "Paul writing to Timothy said, 'I exhort thee therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for leaders and all those that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior.'" Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and this session of the Southbridge Town Council. We invoke your presence to carefully watch over these proceedings. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. Since you have established these authorities to promote peace, order, and justice, therefore we pray for our town manager, for the various town department heads, and in particular for this assembled council. We ask that understanding, wisdom, and unity be granted to this council. Grant each counselor fresh insight into the plans that are to be undertaken this year. May truth and righteousness guide and direct every major decision that this council faces. Grant wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. May this council have a sense of welfare and true needs of the people of Southbridge. Give them confidence in what is good and the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. Grant personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Grant that this council will do what will benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Southbridge. We pray this and ask this in the mighty and blessed name of Jesus. Amen.
Agenda item number six, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Drummond?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor DeLonge?
Present.
Counselor Waddell?
Present.
Counselor Hannah?
Present.
Counselor Markey?
Present.
Counselor C?
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Agenda item number seven is the election of the permanent chairperson. How I will open it up for nominations for the chair, Counselor Lazo.
I take great pleasure in nominating Jack Jovan as chairman of the 45th Council of the Town of Southbridge.
Thank you, Counselor Lazo. I have a nomination for Counselor Jovan. Do I have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Drummond?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DeLonge?
Yes.
Counselor Waddell?
Yes.
Counselor Hannah?
Yes.
Counselor Markey?
Yes.
Counselor C?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Counselor Jovan, Chairman Jovan. Agenda item number eight, election of the vice-chairperson. I will open it up for nominations for the vice-chairperson. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, ma'am. I nominate John Daniel as our vice-chairman.
We have a nomination for John Daniel. Do I have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor John?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DeLonge?
Yes.
Counselor Waddell?
Yes.
Counselor Hannah?
Yes.
Counselor Markey?
Yes.
Counselor C?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Congratulations, Counselor Daniel, our vice-chairman Daniel. Now we'll do the adoption of the permanent seating arrangements, and I am going to turn this over to our new chairman for this fiscal year, Mr. Counselor Jovan.
Thank you. It's going to be a little unorthodox tonight because we have a malfunction with speakers of the microphones due to the lightning strike, so we'll do our best to make sure we fix that, but we'll turn this over to our Town Clerk, Matty.
So I'll just have everyone come up here. We'll just do it alphabetically. Please. Counselor Adams is seat number 12, so you can just sit on this side. So it's a second right here. Counselor Catrona? Counselor Catrona picked seat number 11. Yes. Counselor Manor has picked seat number six. Counselor Marketti has picked seat number 13, lucky 13. Counselor Nash has picked seat number four. Thank you. Counselor Steves has picked seat number five.
Do you know how to fix that? Yeah, just right here, back of this. You can't fix another chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome all councilors to your seating arrangement. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Now move into the regular council meeting of Monday, July 1st, 2019. Again, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Present.
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 Nine members present. Item three, considering except the Town Council minutes of Thursday, June 24th, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Counselor Catrona, Counselor Marketti abstain. Subcommittee reports. General Government, Counselor Steves?
Haven't met, don't have one scheduled at the moment, but I will be scheduling one soon to deal with some of the stuff that we talked about at the last council.
Thank you. DPW was Counsel DePietro. Wish him well, there was no meeting, and there's nothing scheduled at this time. Education and Human Services was Counsel Daniel. Counsel Daniel?
There was no meeting, and there was nothing scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have one scheduled for Plan and Development meeting scheduled for 11 July, 6:00.
Thank you. Protection of persons' property, Counsel Manor?
I have no meeting minutes and no meetings planned at this time.
Thank you. Chairman's announcements. First off, I'd like to thank my fellow councilors for their faith in electing me chairman this year. I really enjoyed last year working with the councilors last year, and I think we had an aggressive agenda that we worked very hard to achieve a lot of items. There's still a lot on the table that need to work forward, especially with the vote in the town for the marijuana bylaw, so we have that work ahead of us, some other zoning issues, as well as the hard work that we're working with the school receiver to try to improve the school system. Council's agenda last year was really to address departments to make sure that they were staffed correctly, such as fire, police, and I know this year we're looking at DPW, and also we really have to solve the issues with our roads. So I know we'll have an ambitious agenda, and I look forward to working with all of you throughout the upcoming year, so thank you very much. Second, we will be resigning subcommittees, so those members of the council that wish to be placed on a subcommittee, it's a minimum of two per our rules, and anybody that wishes to be chair or chair of committee, look forward to having you come aboard. With that being said, we also have citizen members that do serve on these various subcommittees, so anybody that's interested, please put your letter into the town manager's office requesting you be considered for that, and we'll get that over to the subcommittees, and look forward to having you aboard. It's always great to have citizens involved, and there's a lot of work that goes on behind us at subcommittees that really hard work, and really when we come up to these meetings it's to approve the various items and actions that we're taking, but the hard work is really at the subcommittee level, and if you want to get involved in the government, get involved at the subcommittee level, learn about the various departments, and you definitely do make a difference. There's also various boards and commissions that are looking for members, so please, if you're interested, please come up to the town manager's office. With that, I have nothing further to say tonight, so thank you. Acting Town Manager, Karen Harnoyes?
Thank you. I just have a couple of announcements. A couple of notes about our curbside trash and recycling pickup. Due to the Fourth of July holiday this week, Thursday and Friday's trash pickup will be a day later. Thursday's trash will be picked up on Friday, Friday's trash will be picked up on Saturday this week. Now, next week begins the launch of the Mass DEP IQ Kit Grant awarded in the Town of Southbridge. Additional personnel will be on the curb to check recycling toters for contamination. Please be aware that for the next 16 weeks, your recycling may be collected earlier than usual. It is important that all trash and recycling toters be placed by the curb by 7:00 a.m. on your scheduled pickup day, and thank you for your cooperation in this and the effort that for the citizens of Southbridge have taken in improving our recycling program. Just one other from the Board of Health. The Town of Southbridge is currently seeking three energetic and responsible persons for temporary part-time positions to be part of a four-member team of recycling IQ inspectors. The team will be working on the curbside recycling IQ program, a grant-funded program of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to the Town of Southbridge. These are great positions for those studying environmental issues or simply want to be part of improving the curbside recycling for the town, and a full copy of the job description is available on the Town website at www.ci.southbridge MA.us, or you can contact the town manager's office to request a copy. And if you want to apply, please apply to the Town of Southbridge, 41 Elm Street, Southbridge, Mass., 01550, fax number 508-765-5425, or you can email KFERON, that's K-F-E-R-R-O-N, at southbridgemas.org. Please include a cover letter and a Town of Southbridge employment application that's available on the Town of Southbridge website. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Prejudiceations and swearing-in, we haven't done this evening. Citizens forum, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Town Council? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, move on. Item 10, vote to reappoint Evelyn Rivera as municipal hearing officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion? So moved. Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Item 11, vote to reappoint David Payer to the planning board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion? So moved. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Cory Bellrose to the planning board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. 13, vote to reappoint Terry Hensel to the planning board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Item 14, vote to reappoint Caitlin Spencer as animal control officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, it's 2020, I'm sorry, I said 2022. I was in the mode of the other ones, so it's 2020. So we had a motion, a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Karen. Item 15, vote to reappoint Caitlin Spencer as the parking enforcement officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No, my recollection is that she's also a departmental officer, yeah, we appointed her just like we appointed the other.
I believe the police can enforce the parking enforcement, but also that's for the downtown enforcement, I believe, for that, for the two-hour parking. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Item 16, vote to reappoint Denise Staffieri to the Southbridge Cultural Council for a two-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Item 17, vote to reappoint Michelle LeBeuf to the Southbridge Cultural Council for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Item 18, vote to accept the donation of $500 from the Southbridge Community Connections through Harrington Hospital to the Town Manager Substance Abuse Advisory Committee for the purpose of educating the citizens of Southbridge with regard to substance abuse. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present, and we'd like to thank Community Connections and Harrington Hospital for that generous donation to the Town of Southbridge, for that very important program. I know the town manager is very involved in that, and it is an issue that we are trying to fight, and we thank you for any little help that you give, so we appreciate that. Item 19, vote to accept a $3,000 donation from Franklin Realty to be used for our concert on the Common Summer Series. Is there a motion? So moved. Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Like to thank Franklin Realty for stepping up on the concert on the commons to make that happen. We certainly appreciate that generous offer. The Summer Series is usually a very good event to have in town, so thank you very much to Franklin Realty. Item 20, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and the University of Massachusetts Medical School for a school-based administrative activity and/or direct service claims for students eligible for Medicaid effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion? So moved. Second. Discussion? Counselor Manor?
Could there be some clarification? I'm just a little confused on this agenda item. What is it? I mean, I started reading through and stuff, but I would really like this. I'm a little confused on it.
Sure, the University of Massachusetts Medical School helps us capture our billing for Medicaid, and it's mostly through the school department. And actually, starting July 1st, as it says in the letter, the services that we can get reimbursed for have expanded from these, what the term was, was special education students. Now it's changed to anyone who's eligible, any student who's eligible for the Medicaid, which they call medically necessary healthcare services provided for students who are eligible for Medicaid. So we send the information to them, usually it's the school department that gathers the information, sends it to UMass Medical, they put the information together, and then the reimbursement comes back to the town, and the town's been receiving roughly between 200,000, 300,000, which is budgeted and goes back to the town's general fund. So this is for a two-year term for them to help us, and actually, the fee in here is 3.75% of what we receive, which is actually a reduction. The last couple of years it was 4.25%.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I know the town has participated in that for a number of years because we used to keep track of that on the school side, so it is a worthwhile program to gather additional funds for the town. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Counselors forum, I know the mics on that side are not working, so how do you want to do it?
Okay, Mr. Lazo will start on that side. Just to hand you through, I'd like to thank, or I should say congratulate, Mike Marketti, Bill Catrona, Jack Jovan, and you, on behalf of the council, these morning and tonight, we've been working with you. People aren't always agree, but we have worked as a way, we don't have anything to worry about, but working in a community like this is basically a great idea, and I congratulate you all. I'd like to accept the role of Vice Chairman, the state of roads leadership. I think we have two fine individuals. We had two on here last year. The similarity of the council and the reputation of the town. It's okay to have that all day, as a person, you know, being involved, helping our team council, maybe getting out of here last year, and I think that the council is a good chemistry of human beings, and that's because it's not personal, it's about leadership. As I've been here, and while I serve on this council, I've served on other councils in the past, in school committees. It's an interesting chemistry that we have there, and an interesting leadership team, and I'm excited about it, because I think that we can move the agenda from people of Southbridge, roads, schools. We have a lot of strong leadership here on the council, along with the leadership that Mr. Daniel has been with, the children of the council. I'm excited about it, and I just congratulate the ones who gave the position, Vice Chairman of the council. Thank you.
So the cable's saying that they couldn't hear much on that, so Counsel Nash, if you want, you want to go to the microphone? I guess if you guys want to go to the microphone too, or come over here, I'd gladly share my microphone.
Through the chair, thank you. Congratulations to the newly elected councilors, newly sworn-in councilors. Thank you for the comments. Counselor Lazo, I couldn't have said it better myself, took the words from me, but you did it better, as I would expect. I'd also like to encourage all councilors to continue the progress that was being made last year. Everyone is a fine individual up here, but we're even better and stronger together, even with our differences. Thank you, good luck, have a great year.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, again, thank you and congratulations to everybody who has been elected to a slot on the council or to the council themselves, even if we don't always agree, I think we can work together. And I just wanted to mention a couple of quick events that are coming up. July 10th, the Handball Youth Clinic, ages 10 to 18, at Henry Street, from 5:30 p.m. till whenever it ends. July 21st is a youth art show at the Art Center from 2:00 to 4:00 on, that's a Sunday, and that's pretty much all I had, so let's make this a good year.
Thank you, Counselor Steves. Counselor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to also congratulate Counselor Marketti, Counselor Catrona, and again, Counselor Lazo, Counselor Jovan, and congratulate Counselor Daniel and Jovan for their positions that they were elected to tonight. I look forward to working with all of you. I would also like to thank the Town of Southbridge for entrusting me with them for another year. I hope I do you well, and that's all. Happy Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manor. Counselor Catrona?
Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to just congratulate all the newly elected councilors. I look forward to working with everyone, and I think we're gonna have an exciting year. I think Counselor Lazo said it best and summed it up wonderful. Lastly, thanks for the voters, for placing your trust in myself, and look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I want to congratulate all the newly sworn in councilors. Look forward to working with you these next 12 months. Like the chairman has mentioned, and Counselor Lazo had mentioned, it's gonna be an aggressive agenda for this year, so we're looking forward to it. I want to say thank you to the Boy Scouts, local Boy Scouts, who tonight were just approved by the trustees board for the Veterans Memorials to kind of upkeep the World War I memorial across the street by the fire station. So I'm looking forward to their progress over there. But I want to thank you for volunteering your time to do that for our town and our veterans. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Marketti?
Thank you. I would like to thank all the residents of Southbridge who elected me to the town council. And I want to congratulate the newly elected councilors, and I'm looking forward to working with all the councilors, and I'm looking forward to serving the residents of Southbridge. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Before I have Counselor Daniel close it up, I did just distribute a proposed meeting schedule. If anybody has any, Yvonne had made it out today, if there are any conflicts that you can see, because I know last year we might have made a little mistake here or there on a holiday, just let us know. But those are the proposed dates, from now until Christmas. Counselor Daniel?
I'd like to also congratulate the newly elected and newly reelected councilors and wish them well in the coming year. I'd like to thank the council for having faith in me and electing me as your vice chair. I know that we've got a lot of work ahead of us. I know that we're gonna work together. We have a good background working together, and I don't see anything but success with the new councilors fitting in. We have a lot of work ahead, and I plan on working hard for you as the vice chair. That's all. Thank you.
Next meeting date, council?
I'm sorry. The next meeting date is scheduled for Monday, July 15th, at 7:00 in the council chambers.
Thank you, council. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, and I wish everybody a very happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you.